Good evening and welcome to the January 17th meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome those who are here in attendance and those who are watching their live stream now on YouTube or will be watching in the future. As is customary for this board, we will open with a prayer. I've asked Commissioner Godwin to do that. We'll follow with the pledge and I've asked Commissioner Tony Brazel to do that. So if you would, please rise.
Let us pray. Father God, we acknowledge your sovereignty over our day-to-day lives and we thank you, Lord, for the blessings of this day. We ask your blessing tonight on the citizens of our county. Ask your blessing and direction on our meeting tonight that we might be, we might reflect your wisdom and courage and strength. Forgive us our shortcomings and bless Johnston County and the USA. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? And I'd like to quote my good friend Bull Durham. There is no comma after one nation. It's one nation under God and no pause. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right. First item on the agenda is approval of said agenda or any discussion. I hear motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And all in favor of the approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next up is the consent agenda and we have five items on there at this meeting. We have approval of our November 21st meeting. We also have the town of Clayton appointment to the Board of Adjustment. We have also town of Clayton appointments to the planning board and we have a proclamation all in red month for Johnson Health Foundation. And finally, we have a budget revision for our health department. Any of those items need to be pulled or comments or your approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with the items stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next up is public comments and I just wanted to say this is the time for any audience member to come forward and speak. You have three minutes to speak. You can address the board on any item that is not on the agenda and it would just remind you that it is a time for the board to listen. It's not a time for engagement and conversation, but a time for the board to listen. And we ask that you remember to maintain proper decorum and remain civil at all times. So I will open it up now to anybody who wants to come forward. If you would, when you come forward, state your name and your general location, town or township will be sufficient. Say. Yes, sir. Mr. Walters.
Good evening, gentlemen, Adam. Nice to see you. So I'm Trey Walters. Got some businesses in the Smithfield area at the airport, Blue Line Aviation, Blue Line Technical Services, Low and Slow Smokehouse and Spark Chasers Aircraft Services. Wanted to just come tonight because the airport recently had a state of aviation event at the airport that we weren't invited to, that they talked about the improvements to the economic impact of aviation around the state, particularly in Johnston County. And essentially what we've had is we've had a big decrease in private air travel contribution from Raleigh and a huge increase from where we were before to where we are now in Johnston County as far as economic impact to the airport. And really, the only thing that changed in the year and a half where those numbers changed was that my company moved in and brought a lot of stuff with it. You know, as I fly over the Amazon fulfillment center down the street that mostly sits empty, I can't think about anything other than unfulfilled commitments. And that's really what I want to talk to you guys about tonight is unfulfilled commitments. And you know, we seem to have a lot of those. In spite of efforts of some in local government and those in the airport management, Blue Line has outperformed its promises though. So we've fulfilled our promises and exceeded them. So I just want to talk about a little bit of that here tonight. And while we celebrate success, we know we could have done a lot more if not for the interference of the airport authority and some in local government, including some, you know, that are working actively against us. Some of the things that we promised when I appeared before you guys for the Economic Incentive Grant a couple of years ago, there were some items on that that were performance requirements. So I want to go through a couple of those and how we turned out. So we said we'd invest at least $4 million in facilities down here at Johnston County. We actually did over $10 million. We said we would employ an additional 25 people. We actually grew by 50 and we acquired another company. So we moved three companies in instead of one and then we acquired a fourth that was already here and we're looking to double. We sent an article out this weekend looking to double the staff of that company. For based aircraft, we said we'd bring 18 at a $200,000 per aircraft value for 3.6 million. We actually brought 29 valued at over 20 million in property to the county. So more than six times what we said we would do. In 2022, Blue Line Aircraft flew over 11,700 flights out of the Johnston County Airport. And if you look at traffic numbers, that's a lot bigger than like Kinston, Winston-Salem and Stanley County combined, all three of which have our traffic control towers. That's over 20,000 flight hours. We helped pilots get 593 new certifications and licenses. As you know, there's a huge airline pilot shortage and we exist to help fill that need. We also helped about 75 new pilots enter the pilot workforce, numerous of which are at the airlines. These students, by the way, are mostly from around the country. Very few of them are from here. It doesn't seem like access to aviation is something that many people think about or feel is realistic and we aim to change that here in Johnston County. We love to find, you know, creative ways to provide better access to these high-paying careers in the local area, to local students, you know, who otherwise might look for a blue collar job. They really have an opportunity to get a six-figure, you know, 200-plus thousand dollar a year career without needing any college experience and without needing any money. And so we're here tonight, among other things, to announce that we're going to start the Fly Right Scholarship Program where we'll fund $100,000 for a student from a local Johnston County public school to attend our course, become a pilot and work their way up to the airlines. And the focus for that recipient would be somebody of high moral character, high ethics that goes above and beyond to make a difference, to make the world a better place. Blue Line's internal statistics show a 38% increase in flights flown and 72% increase in licenses issued from '21 to '22. Blue Line sales went up over 50% and could do the same again this year if we're not hindered. Blue Line paid recently over $130,000 in property taxes to the county and contributes about another half million or so to payroll and other sales and use tax and that kind of stuff. We're going to spend about $650,000 at the airport on fuel this year alone. We represent about a third of their total income.
Mr. Walters, we're at four minutes and I know you've got some more, so we'll allow you a little bit more time. Go ahead.
I appreciate that. I'll make it quick.
Okay.
In 2023, Blue Line's got enough aircraft on order to double its fleet size again and bring over 25 more million dollars worth of aircraft to the airport, all of which is taxed, property taxed. These are all conservative numbers. And in spite of all this good that we've brought and commitments that we've made and followed through on, we've been forced to litigate for the first year with the airport authority. We've spent six figures on it, you know, close to a half million dollars fighting for our right to operate and all we ask is that the airport authority follow the law. They've spent hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars in the past year, year and a half, most of which they've hidden when we didn't have the public records request to find out what the number is. So you know, this isn't really the welcome that a valuable business asset should receive in this county and I hope that you guys, as Commissioner Godwin said, will act with wisdom and courage to make some changes and to try to prevent this from happening to anybody else. You know, so at a time where we should be celebrating success and economic development victory, you know, we're having to deal with this ugly elephant in the room and the airport authority appears to be unwilling to come to the table to work anything out. We stand ready to work out these problems and get back to business and to help the county and I hope that you guys will help do what you can to get these issues resolved so we can move forward. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Lindquist, do you want to step up? This is, Dr. Lindquist is our new president at Johnston Community College. I think he's five days.
I will be even brief.
Into the job. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You won't get three minutes out of me. Yeah, this is my, my third day on the job. I just wanted to come here and introduce myself. Vern Lindquist, new president up the road. Very glad to be here and I'm looking forward to a long and fruitful working relationship with the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Madam Clerk, were there any emails? Okay, no emails. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a presentation by Cloudwise. And I'm not sure who the representative here to speak to that, but Rick, do you need to give any introduction to that or? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. You may recall back in the spring, several broadband companies came to the board and made presentations for their application for great grant that was to be selected by the state and went through those processes and the state selected Cloudwise for Johnston County. So we've met with Cloudwise on a staff level and we thought it would be good if they would come and kind of update commissioners on their plans. And I do believe the original plan they had was ballpark 1,300 homes they were passing by and I think this is, this plan is more at 2,000. So for that, I'll be glad to turn it over to them. That's just a little background. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and I appreciate you all having, having me here tonight. Did you want me to do the clicker? You guys got it. All right, perfect. I think you guys have kind of heard from us before on a couple of different occasions. I don't need to go.
I didn't catch.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shawn Olson, President, CEO of Cloudwise.
Thanks.
Again, I think you guys have heard from us on a few different occasions, but just wanted to kind of just reintroduce who Cloudwise is. We've been around for a fair while, ultimately focusing on trying to help close the gap in counties throughout North Carolina, predominantly eastern North Carolina. And kind of our position has been in working with the state even before the grant program started is that it's got to be a marriage, if you will, of county and provider. And so we've done a lot of projects since then. I'll share a little bit about those and we'll kind of update you all on the, on the current grant that's in queue for Johnston County. I believe that you guys have seen this before, but ultimately the great grant 2022 awarded a handful of grants. There's still a fair amount of money that's out there for additional grants that we expect to be pushed out the first part of this year, potentially before the summer. But the one that, that we had received with you all was for a max grant of a little over 4.7 million. And that grant will serve roughly around 2,000, a little over 2,000 households with high-speed fiber access in Johnston County. As part of the, as part of the project, we traditionally will split the matching requirement that's associated with that. The requirement on the match right now is 762 and that's what we're kind of putting forth to split with you all. And I believe that's what ultimately we want the board to consider as part of the, as part of Johnston County's commitment to the grant. And I believe that we talked about that a little bit last time. Right now, just from an update from the state, we are still awaiting the paperwork from them. We are hopeful that we'll see that in, in first part of Q1. We're supposed to see that by the end of the year, but they had a couple of holdups in working through some of the, the grants across the board. But as soon as we hear back from that, we'll obviously reach out to, to you all and let you know that that's been completed. Our hope is that we'll start this project by Q2 at the very latest with you all. I don't know if you guys had any questions about the great grant so far. I did want to share kind of two other projects that are a little more mature that we're working with and the intention, I know the intention is necessarily to talk about every other county, but to focus on Johnston County. But these are projects that are currently in queue that we have been working with, with other counties and just to kind of show you how those projects have transpired. So one of our first ones, and this was actually one of the first PPPs in the state of North Carolina, was with Nash County. We currently split basically a project with them, which was a three-phase project. We're on the third phase of that currently and that started off ultimately as a fixed wireless project to bring service in some of the more remote areas into that county. We started that actually before the great grant even started. Today, we have around 18 and a half million going into that county. We actually built out all of Nashville, North Carolina, which is around 2,500 households and we've increased that to another 1,700 households that we're bringing fiber to. There's no match requirement for that. That's a straight corporate project that we're doing and we've got two or three others that are planned in that community as well. And then Harnett County, your neighbor, that we've been working on just after that project started off again as a fixed wireless project. We just completed the build of that at the end of last year and that project has, has gone really well. We actually did two additional fiber projects that were more corporate projects that we've been working with in that county. And we have four small townships that we are doing complete fiber builds on as well in, in Harnett County. In addition, they did win a great grant as well and to date, we have around 22 million in broadband projects that we've been able to bring to, to that county as well. I think that was less than maybe three minutes, although I don't know if I had a time limit.
No, no. You're on the agenda. You're on the agenda.
I have a question.
All right. Yes, sir.
I'm sure there are several factors that, that come into play when you determine what footprint you're going to employ, like here in Johnston County, but is there any particular overriding factor that would determine where this activity is going to be?
Yes. So the state itself, in this last round, rather than go by census blocks, that's how it used to be done, actually sent addresses. So we actually have addresses that were eligible for, for grants. And so when we looked to do a project, we particularly looked at those addresses and submitted for those.
I guess it was a situation of trying to get the most bang for the buck?
Absolutely.
Right.
You know, Mr. Olson, probably the number one topic we have with our constituents is about broadband coverage. And I appreciate, really appreciate you folks doing what you're doing. No matter where we go, we still going to have voids in our county and so I guess we're going to be challenged to, to close those voids.
Absolutely.
But in this day and age, I know those folks were, I'm looking at what you say is, is going to appreciate that service.
Yeah, our, our mission since the beginning has been to no man gets left unserved within a county and that's really what started our initiative into this. And the, the two projects that I brought up, those grants aren't state grants. Those are the county sitting down at the table and that's what they're paying for really because as you know, you guys can't own broadband infrastructure and deploy service. Probably don't want to. But sitting down at the table and that, like we've actually started to do with Johnston County, but understanding where those areas are of coverage and where that need is, regardless of what the maps show us, you guys know your county's better than anyone. And then we outline, maybe that's 20 projects or 30 projects. We can actively pursue grants for you all, which we'll actively do now that we'll be in Johnston County. But there's also opportunities to where we know a grant just won't be eligible in an area, but we still want to service it and we would, we always have matching funds. So for us, we're a granting agency as long as we're servicing households and are happy to help close that gap.
What is the price point? I know it's average or it may not have been established yet for your customers.
In terms of like capital cost to build out?
How much do they have to pay for?
Oh, for internet service? Yeah, absolutely. We could send those over. I think you may have them, but they range in around $40 a month for the very lowest package. We deployed that package because we are a member of the ACP program that you can get that $30 discount. So it roughly winds up being around $10 a month, which is pretty inexpensive. And then we've just launched, in the process of launching packages, up to 10 gig right now. But for this market particularly, we generally go to around $100, $120 a month for our one gig package.
How do you bring it to the, to the household? Is it plowed in fiber or?
Yeah, so when we do projects, some providers actually just pull conduit down the street and then once they get a larger mass of people together, then they go and do, then they'd go and bring that service to the home. When we do our builds, we bring it to the curb anywhere we go. And so someone will call us up now that, you know, we leave basically signs and we have folks that are in market that will be doing that construction. And then when they call us up, the commitment that we go by is the state of North Carolina. That's how this grant is and we've made that our own commitment to. So within 10 days, we would bring, we basically do a drop. So one of our construction crews would do a drop from the curb to their house. Once that drops in place, our team will come in and we'll blow fiber through that and put what's called a nid on the side of the home, which basically converts that fiber to copper and then we bring that into the house. The internet packages I mentioned actually do come with the router and Wi-Fi 6, which is the latest technology into the home too.
Okay.
Does that answer your?
It does. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I got one question. It might be out of your realm of expertise, Shawn, but I know in dealing with the DOT, when there, a lot of their highway projects, they're putting fiber in the ground now. Do you guys take advantage of that or do you interface with that at all?
Not a ton. We've actually have a few different relationships that we are working with, particularly the state, the local REN, the Research Education Network that's in North Carolina. We're in active conversation with them around, around a thousand mile route across eastern North Carolina that we're looking to acquire. We haven't done much with NC DOT to date though.
Okay, okay.
The addresses that you were assigned, how about we get a copy of?
Yeah, that's public. I can, I can send that to you all. Jack, if you could just take action, we can send those over.
And give us an insight where it's going to be at anyway.
Yeah, we can send you a more detailed map of that as well.
So there's a little, that's just what I was asking. There's a little bit better, still not a great quality, but it's better than the one that was in the.
Well, a little squeakly up in the northeast, it gets my attention. That's up in my area and I would love to see a truck coming down my road.
Somehow it comes back to where you sit.
To what?
Comes down to where you sit.
Your perspective here. That's right, your perspective. That's all about perspective.
And generally, not every house is eligible along that route for grant funding, but that doesn't mean we won't service them. So typically within around 1,500 feet of any of our fiber builds, we will extend fiber out to those locations too.
I got you.
Any other questions for Mr. Olson?
Thank you.
If not, Mr. Hastert, do you have a closing comment for us?
Mr. Chairman, board members, just wanted to mention a couple of things. As I said, they came, those broadband companies came last May and the board did say they would consider a match at the time. And one thing too, we will, we will examine that as a possible ARPA funds for the match, part of the $40 million that came to Johnston County. That's primarily been used for utilities, but we believe broadband is a, is a possible use there, so we'll examine that. The other interesting thing is about the number of households passed, it will be interesting to see how many folks actually connect at that time. And I think maybe that could be something maybe in the final report that we put as a part of the motion to, for the board to consider that we would have monthly updates. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments or a motion perhaps to move forward?
Mr. Chairman, I just think that, you know, we're moving in the right direction. I don't think it's where we all would like to be, but we're, we're making progress with 2073 household serves and an additional 55 miles of high-speed fiber. So that being said, I would be glad to make a motion that we provide a half of the match, which was not to exceed $381,000 for the award of this project.
I second.
All right. Any other comments? I just wanted to say I think there was probably some agreements in there. Do you want?
I did want to mention, Mr. Chairman, that the, the state is going to require that the county enter into performance agreements. The most recent update that we've gotten from the state is that they're working through those. Yeah, that's right. So they're working through those performance agreements to give those to the providers and to the counties. So what we would need to do is also make sure that this, that this contribution is subject to that performance agreement and that we would do any budget amendment that might be necessary for the project as well and that they'll, that the reimbursement will be at the completion of the project pursuant to the terms of the performance agreement. So the performance agreements will come to you, but I think that everybody needs to know that we're moving forward. I think that's, that's where we are right now.
So I'll amend my motion based on what the council just wisely advised.
That's what I heard you say.
What she said.
That's what I said right there.
And we have the second amended, so we have.
There's an echo in the room.
Motion and a second amended, so. All right. All in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Olson. All right. Next up, we have Shandra Farmer to present to us a bulk wastewater agreement with the town of Clayton. Ms. Farmer?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The county has an existing eight-inch force main west of Clayton on Highway 42. This was constructed in 1992 and in addition to that, when that was constructed, we had an inter-local agreement with the town of Clayton that was essentially like a pass-through agreement. It allowed the county to discharge 600,000 gallons a day of wastewater to the town and the town could discharge 600,000 gallons a day of wastewater back to the county. Since then, we've kind of amended the way we operate. We've had subsequent inter-local agreements that have changed that mode of operation. But in recent months, we've been working with town staff to outline a proposed inter-local agreement that'll give the county the ability to continue to utilize this, this force main on a routine basis. The proposed agreement will allow the county to, will allow the county to discharge up to 450,000 gallons a day for the next, well, for the next eight years, the county could discharge 450,000 gallons a day and we would allow the town of Clayton to utilize 150,000 gallons a day into that force main for, for proposed development in the town of Clayton. After that eight-year period, then the county would, would be allowed to discharge up to the full 600,000 gallons a day from that force main into the town's system for treatment. The agreement terms 20 years with two renewal, two 10-year renewal option terms. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this agreement.
So this, this force main, the 450 gallons will be for the county, 150,000 gallons for eight years will be available to Clayton.
That's correct.
After that time, the full 600,000 gallons will go to Clayton through that line and then Clayton has the right to discharge the same amount through our plant?
That's, that's a separate agreement. So any other inter-local agreements? The town of Clayton has separately purchased 1.44 million gallons a day that are discharged to the county's plant. So we would operate, you know, that pass-through is kind of going away and these would be new updated agreements so that the town would discharge the capacity that they have purchased at 1.44 million into the county system and then the county could discharge the 600 back to the town.
Shandra, I believe this is all west of Clayton on 42, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions? All right. If not, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve this interlocal agreement with Clayton for the prescribed amounts of 450,000 gallons and the, for the county and 150,000 gallons for Clayton for the eight-year period.
I second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ms. Farmer.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have comprehensive land use plan on the agenda, continued discussion and I guess this is, we are within our timeframe and I understand that we have had conversations in, with Mr. Newton on our comments, so the next meeting, we should, you should have all yours in and discuss with him at that time. So I think we'll, this will be probably the, the last time we will have a short discussion on the, on the land use plan update. So any other comments from others on the board? All right then. So we will move on to manager reports and comments. All right. Board reports and comments.
I think we need to take the opportunity, these towns that do not have established water and sewer authority, water and sewer departments yet, to offer regionalization, participation from the county to operate those water. We're doing it already, we're just making it more official.
We're doing it already, we're just making it more official so that we won't be in a situation later on where we have to negotiate the operation of that system if it ever comes necessary.
All right, Mr. Godwin?
Obviously, this land use plan is, you know, on our front burner, but it drives so many things towards that necessary regionalization. We really need to get that done, I think.
Mr. Chairman Harris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Smith? I will say I'm tardy on one of my assignments for board appointments. I have asked Ms. Cunningham, I don't know if she got my message yet, but for the frequency of the meetings, before I go and make changes and pile a bunch of meetings on somebody, I want to make sure we kind of have that fairly dispersed across the board. So I think I've talked with some of you. I don't know if there's going to be a lot of changes, but I just want to make sure that y'all know that's coming, and I'll get the draft and proposal with you in the next couple of days, once I get that information. So that's my only update. So if there are not any other comments, then I think we have a closed session. We need to attend.
Okay. I move the board go into a closed session for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privileges pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3, including Johnston County versus Brower, 20CVS 1827, and for the purpose of discussing matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area pursuant to NCGS 14331811A4.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second to go into closed session for the reasons stated. All in favor, please say aye. And there should be no action taken when we come back, so we will go into closed session after we have a minute to clear the room. Thank you.
All right. [end of transcript]